One minute.
And he slowly walks in.
Ready? All right, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. We'll go ahead and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Next up is roll call. So Nora?
Kate?
Here.
Roseanne?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Marlo?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is citizen comments. Do we have any ahead of time? No? Anybody in the crowd, would they like to speak now or forever hold your peace? No? Okay. Reports, board members report on workshops attended. If we could keep it to two minutes, please. Anybody have anything?
I wouldn't keep it to two minutes.
If you want to, you go ahead.
No, I don't have one this week.
I was gonna say, you can have one.
Next month.
All right. Next up is superintendent's report.
Right, one second. That was quick. I was expecting something to come out of that committee report. First off, y'all, I don't know if you know, realize this or not, but we are like almost done with the school year. Like with the switch of the end of the year, we are next week. Like that's it. So it's coming quick, right Amy? Really noticeable. Real noticeable at the high school. And also, first off, thank you to our Buildings and Grounds team for coming tonight and having dinner with the school board. Very much appreciate that. It's really nice for you to be able to have some one-on-one time to share what's going on and share anything else, concerns, all that good stuff with the board. They always give that information to me in order for us to improve moving forward. So thank you for spending time this evening coming. Also, I'd like to start out recognizing our teaching staff. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. So thank you to all of our staff because our staff are really the backbone of our schools. And we're beyond thankful to all of our staff and the really high-quality staff we have here in B A S D, who creates such strong, safe, caring, and thriving places for all of our students. So thanks again to all of our teachers across the district. Additionally, since we are saying, that's just a reminder that it is the last day of school, May 23rd. That's what kiddos, I think, look like as they're exiting school, but not far behind them are usually the staff too. Also excited for summer to come. Graduation ceremonies that are coming up in the event, any board members able to attend. If you are wanting to, just let us know. We can always add you to the calendar. A few of you have already said you're wanting to come to the B H S graduation, but also wanted to highlight the other graduations we have taking place across the district as well. So Pack House is the first one, Project Active Citizen. Again, that's our 18 to 21-year-old program. They have their graduation at Grace Church, and that's this week at 11 o'clock in the morning. Really nice ceremony. It's our consortium with Waterford, so both us and Waterford will be present. Really well done. Have a nice lunch there if you're looking for lunch at the same time. And then Fox River graduation is our alternative school, May 21st. That's at 5:30. Weather dependent, right now it's going to be outside of Fox River, the building, Lincoln School. And it will start at 5:30. These are all the start times. And if it, the weather is not the best, then we will be transitioning it here to the district office. Hey, just as a reminder, B H S's graduation is going to be outside, right? Right, Rob? Right. I mean, it's going to be. And we've dodged rain before, it's fine. So that'll be on May 23rd. That's at 6 o'clock. And right now, we have that Kate and Roseanne, both are going to be in attendance. Thank you for that. Again, if anyone else wants to come, just let us know. You can sit up on stage with Amy and I. And then Wisco's graduation, that's our charter school, will be on May 29th, and that's at 6 o'clock here at the district office. So again, those are all four of our graduation ceremonies happening across the district. Also, when it comes to athletics, what's happening in our spring sports, our baseball team is currently has a 5 and 10 record. They just had a big win over rival Union Grove just this past Monday. Our track and field, both girls and boys, finished fourth in the S L C Really Meet, and they also placed fifth in the Racine County Meet. Our boys golf team, Junior Cole Walby, continues to have a super successful season. Our team hosted the annual Ryder Cup Invitational just a few days ago. Our girls softball is currently 8 and 5 in the conference. They're 6 and 2. They had two really big wins over with Social Central. Boys tennis is currently in a conference duel record of 2 and 1 with wins over Elkhorn and Waterford. Girls soccer is current overall record is 6 and 5 in their, in the conference. They're 1 and 2. Junior Aubrey Reisman keeps leading the team with goals. And then last but not least, this is new to the district this year. We have joined the Elkhorn Lacrosse Co-op. This is a good way for us to partner together with lots of neighboring school districts for some of the sports that aren't as, aren't big enough for us to hold our own team, but would be big enough if we just join a co-op with districts around us. So this is something that Eric Sulik, our new director, athletic director, has added. And we do have one student at the moment participating in the lacrosse team. Also, at B H S, we did have B H S-driven students hosted the 5th Annual A Night to Remember. It's a prom-style event for students that are at the high school who have special needs, and that took place on April 30th at Veterans Terrace. All the students, the driven students and all of our other B H S students had a great time where they were featuring games, music, food, and a lot of dancing. Our B H S forensics program won top state honors. And this is, they, they got the prestigious excellence award at the state competition in UW-Madison, ranking in the top 5% of nearly 300 teams across the state of Wisconsin. They've received this honor the last 20 out of 22 years. So congrats to our forensics team at the high school. Additionally, B H S students Miley Penzel, Brynlee Gale, and Braxton Boyd were honored at the V F W banquet on April 24th for their finalist entries for the Voice of Democracy Speech Contest. Braxton was the first-place winner, and he shared his speech on this year's prompt, which was about, "Is America Today Our Forefather's Vision?" It was a memorable evening celebrating student talent and patriotism. Then at the high school, as you know, we switched over from having required service hours as a high school graduation requirement to switching to embedding service into all of our schools K-12 in a more authentic experience. So at the high school, they had their spring service day on April 24th. B H S's Key Club hosted the service day where students, all of the students at the high school, volunteered with local nonprofits, taking part in projects that gave back to our Burlington community. It was really impactful event, and they participated in environmental projects, helping the community centers, and really did a great job making a difference altogether. Again, big thanks to the Burlington B H S Key Club for putting it all together. We also had a group of students, our English language learners at the high school, all went for a visit to the Wisconsin State Capitol, connect their studies to state government within a real-world tour there. They also had the chance to meet Senator Steve Nass at the Assembly Chamber. Special thanks also to Richard Hawk for his generous donation to the E L program. Within our Burlington Alternative School, at Fox River Consortium, students were raving about the new Dubai chocolate craze. As you know, our F R C program is heavily focused on project-based learning. And Mr. Wedding worked with one of our students to make his dream become a reality. He's really obsessed with Dubai chocolate and wanted to figure out how to make it. So they worked on it together and perfected it. So if you're really wanting some legit chocolate, I suggest going over F R C because they know how to make Dubai chocolate. Anyone have Dubai chocolate before? Anyone? Me neither. Go over to F R C, you might be able to have some. Okay, Pack Program, students recently toured UW-Whitewater Lakeland University and Shepherd's College to explore post-secondary options that support independence and continued learning. Of the seven graduating this spring, one will attend UW-Whitewater, and another student will also attend Shepherd's College.
That's in Union Grove, right?
Yes. Yep. And then Project Win students stands for What I Need here in the lower level of the district office. Students have been busy with great progress on their spring I-Ruddy testing. They've really improved on their assessments, moving up at least one grade level. Four of them have scored at reading or higher. And then later this month, they're celebrating an 11th grader who is going to be transitioning back to B H S come this fall. So kudos to Project Win, and it's awesome for us to be able to start to have our students transitioning back to their peers in our buildings. So that's, that's really awesome. Cooper Montessori students volunteered at Culvers to help fundraise for Safety Patrol and their Montessori ambassadors. Always love going to Culvers and having our little guys serve us. Dyer really enjoyed Teacher Appreciation and Cafe Superhero Week last week. Students really showed their gratitude towards all of their teachers through a lot of notes, drawings, and kind gestures. The Dyer P T O was really strong this year as well and did a great job providing really nice snacks, goodies, and daily surprises. And it was a really fabulous week over at Dyer, as well as it was across the entire school district. Just so you know, I took it upon myself, I thought, what am I going to do for Teacher Appreciation Week, right? So on a Wednesday night, I'm leaving, leaving the office, and I'm like, I'm gonna make chocolate chip cookies for everybody, I think. So I go to the store, get all the stuff to make chocolate chip cookies, and I don't know, four or five hours later, I think I made over 400 cookies or something like that, and thanks to the team for helping distribute them to all of our schools. I, halfway through, I was like, this was a bad idea. This was a lot of cookies at one time. Burned a couple batches, that was a little frustrating, but didn't give those to the staff though. So, but I'll think twice on that one, I think, next year. Carter Middle School, this is pretty cool. On May 1st, B A S D alum Jalen Crowsey, who is now a systems engineer for the James Webb Space Telescope, virtually spoke with Ms. Ulenberg's Flight and Space Class about the telescope's work and discoveries. She also sent the students baggies of keys with images, bookmarks, and stickers about the telescope, and what a cool and inspiring experience for our students. That's just a screenshot of her on there with the students. Waller, third graders really tidied things up for Earth Day. They participated in making the Waller grounds extra spiffy for Earth Day. Big kudos and shout-out to Ms. Rouse for organizing the cleanup with her students. Winkler staff and, or, and students enjoyed going to the zoo. They also were introduced to financial literacy. A special thanks to Bill Corduckey for sharing his expertise when it comes to litters, or financial literacy. So thank you for that. They also, our elementary schools have been enjoying their spring concerts. The picture there is Winkler's 3rd and 4th grade spring concert. Additionally, this is something that is really pretty cool that we're doing within the district. We're the first school district in Racine County to engage in a reunification drill, which also involved the Town of Burlington Fire and Police, Racine County Sheriff's Department, Burlington Fire, and Burlington Police Department. A reunification drill is where you would involve a different site off-campus somewhere in the event of an emergency where you need to evacuate your building, and how do you reunify them with their families? So we have been working on the reunification drill now for two years, and just this year was our first time where we had students and parents actively engaged. So thank you and kudos to some Winkler 4th grade families and their students who all participated in that. We transferred students from Winkler to the reunification site. Parents then met at the reunification site, and our staff did a great job leaving all of the buildings in order for us to simulate the actual reunification drill in the event of an actual need for reunification. It was really, really cool, eye-opening experience. We learned a lot from it and have already talked about some adjustments we want to make moving forward. So kudos to everyone involved. Additionally, within our communication, Community Education Department, summer is always pretty busy with community ed. The Summer Activity Guide has been mailed to over 12,000 households and also distributed to all of our K-8 students. We are offering 50 different classes and camps, including new ones like Social Security Essentials, Quilting for Beginners, and Hands-on Fishing Camp. Maybe I should do that one. On May 17th, the community ed is also hosting a baby city training class in collaboration with American Red Cross, and they already have 20 participants registered for that. Summer Rec will also be at B H S again this summer, starting on June 2nd, offering kids a fun and active summer experience. For those of you that might not know what Summer Rec is, it's kind of like a daycare-type setting, but at the high school to support the community. Usually, we have about 60 to 80 students involved in Summer Rec. Also, with our B H S athletics, we have the Gonzala Training Systems is offering a Speed and Strength Program for grades 9 through 12 from June 2nd to August 15th for $75. They will be focusing on enhancing strength, speed, power, agility, and injury resilience for high school athletes. I swear, I'm almost done. Within our Health Department, they continue to conduct the M E R T drills with local police and fire departments, ensuring staff are well-prepared for medical emergencies and reinforcing our commitment to safety. So this, you can see, they were practicing the M E R T drill over at Waller. Also, the department is currently sharing important immunization information with families as we start to approach the 25, 26 school year, so that families can take care of things this summer that need to be taken care of. And additionally, we just wrapped up a 7th grade reproductive health talk with Nurse Jill Dregger held those. And that was awesome. It was the first year that we've done that, and it's part of our Human Growth and Development Plan across B A S D. As you know, this one, I won't hit on a lot. When we get to the Teaching and Learning Committee for the school board, the last visit that they did was over at B H S and kind of hit up some of our C T E programming. So look for some updates from that Teaching and Learning Committee, but here's a few pictures from that. And then also, within our Technology Department, I thought this was a good time to talk about our Chromebooks and how they work in the district, so that you as board members just remember, we have a four-year lease for one-to-one Chromebooks for grades 1 through 12. We are finishing our second year of that lease, so we have two more years to go. Students who are in grades 1 through 8 all return their Chromebooks at the end of the school year. Students who are in 9th through 11th grade are able to keep their Chromebooks over the summer. Our seniors turn in their Chromebooks and their cords at the end of the school year. And then we use those Chromebooks, we clean them up, and then they go to the first graders across the system. And then our kindergarten students have iPads within the classrooms that they use, but just wanted you to be aware of how that works, in case you get any questions on that too with the Chromebooks. Also, for 4K enrollment, so we've been enrolling students into 4K. We tend to have about 145 4Kers across the system usually. And we've had two 4K screenings that were completed already with 77 students that have participated in that. Right now, we're on track. We've been tracking the last three years, our 4K enrollments, to just see where we're at. We're at the mark where we normally should be at this time with the number of enrollments we expect for the fall. Families who are interested in 4K, we encourage you to enroll earlier rather than later, just so that we can get you the information that you need for 4K. Additionally, we have summer school that is going to be starting on June 9th. It'll run through July 20th. It is from always Mondays through Thursdays. We hold it at Carter Middle School because it is our only school across the district that has air conditioning. So that makes sense to have summer school there. We have already, we have 128 students that are enrolled in summer school between the grades 5K through 7. Then we also have the Camp Invention that is right away, starting June 2nd through the 6th. So that starts before summer school does. This too will be held at, it's at, is this at the high school, Amy? It's either at the high school or Carter. Carter? I think Carter, okay. One of those two locations. This is a really cool STEM activity. It is from 9 o'clock in the morning until 3:30. My daughters have done it in the past. It is really cool. They do some amazing projects, super heavy on STEM, encouraging families to attend. We have over 30-plus students already wanting to go. There is a discount, and there are scholarships available for $100 off. So if you know of anyone interested in that, please encourage them to attend. And then last but not least, did post about this, and this went out to all of our families as well. We do have a Staff Retirement and Recognition Celebration that we're having this year on May 27th. It's on one of our in-service days after school is over. We'll be, we are shifting it to a morning time. It's going to be a breakfast on the 27th. I encourage any of you that want to attend that to come if you can. Starts at 8 o'clock. It's at Veterans Terrace. The purpose of that is to celebrate our staff, to one, recognize all of our retirees and celebrate them, but also recognize longevity within the district as well. So we have awards and gifts for everyone, 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, all the way up to 35 years of service in the district. You can see here, here's the list of retirees as of right now that we've officially received. Vicki Balian is retiring 33 years of service to B A S D. She currently is the Administrative Assistant at Waller. Colleen Clifford has been with us for 22 years. She's a math interventionist and Wisco teacher. Jean DeBink has been with us for 20 years as a speech path. Dale Eichman has been with us for 11 years as a paraprofessional at Waller. Julie Beth Farver is a tech ed teacher at the high school. She's been with us for five years. Donna Cowan, 19 years as a paraprofessional at Dyer. Diane Lazio, 19 years as a paraprofessional at Waller. Terry Morkel, 19 years as a physical therapist across the district. And 38 years for Penny Yonkey, choir teacher at B H S. All of those here in B A S D. So we will be recognizing and celebrating all of them, along with those longevity awards. And if you're wanting to help donate to make that nice breakfast, you can always click on that QR code. I can get you the link also, if you'd like to donate for that breakfast for staff. And that's the end of my superintendent report.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Next up is the Consent Agenda items. This is where we approve the minutes for April 14th and April 28th. Bank statement of bills, appointments, resignations, retirements, and terminations, donations, and policies that are up for second reading. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda item as presented.
Yep, just one second before we approve those. As we start to enter towards the end of the school year, we have a lot more hires that we're making. And sometimes there's hires after a Personnel Committee was met. So just want to call out that there's four additional staff members on that list. One of them is Catherine Meyer, Cooper Montessori Level 1 through 3 teacher. Greg Newberg, a B H S school counselor. Rebecca Benedict, our new Dyer Elementary Principal. She's here. You want to raise your hand? Right there. Yep. And since I'm on Rebecca, Rebecca comes to us with 21 years of experience in education. 14 of her years as an elementary school teacher, teaching grades 1, 2, 3, and 4. She also spent three years as an instructional coach, as an interim associate principal, and is currently Dean of Students in Shorewood. So Rebecca's track record is one that I would say, from talking to references and things like that and just meeting her, is one of collaboration and relationship building. And we're super excited to have you join our team and become the Dyer Principal next year. So welcome to the team, Rebecca. And then last but not least, a new add is extracurricular staff Ben Biagiski, helping with B H S softball.
Okay. Before we get to motion, I just want to highlight a few donations. $2,550 through the B A S D Foundation. $28,545 for B H S programs and partial for the turf field payment. $1,000 towards Dyer. $5,968.89 for Music Matters, and then of course, a various spannering of donations for the Special Needs Resource Fair. So very generous for those folks to contribute to our district. With that, do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items?
So moved.
Okay. Second, all right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed. All right, that is passed. Next up, items for discussion would be the Building and Grounds 2024, 2025 recap. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Warren.
Yes. Hi, everybody. I'm Jess Warren. I'm the Director of Buildings and Grounds for the Burlington Area School District, and this is my update for kind of the previous year, from last summer until now. First, I just want to kind of go over all of what we have in the district, kind of give everybody an idea of what we take care of and all of our buildings and all of our facilities. We have six schools in total, Cooper Elementary, Dyer, Waller, and Winkler. Carter Middle School, Burlington High School. Additional buildings are the Pack House, F R C, District Office, which has Project Win or Maintenance Shop in it. Newly to us will be the 496 Building, which is currently occupied by Gateway. July 1st, we'll be taking that over. It's the building that's in between the Burlington High School and the Roundabout. So we'll be taking that over July 1st. And then our School Forest, which is about 160 acres altogether. Interior spaces, we kind of did a tally of everything to, again, give you guys a scope of what we do and what we cover. We have almost 700,000 square feet of space. 244 classrooms, 106 restrooms, seven main offices, six gyms, which include nine full basketball courts, six cafeterias, six commercial kitchens, and numerous other spaces. Outdoor spaces, we have nine hardball slash softball fields, one turf stadium with track, two additional football fields, three soccer fields, five playgrounds, one shot put and discus area, one small track around Carter, eight full-size tennis courts. Again, the School Forest at 160 acres. And that brings us to a total of 276 acres that the district takes care of as a whole. Our crew, our Buildings and Grounds staff, which some are here tonight that had dinner with the school board. We have around 20 to 25 custodians, two full-time grounds staff, two part-time outdoor grounds staff, two building engineers, one events coordinator slash building engineer, one custodial supervisor and building engineer, one admin assistant, and then myself. So it's a lot of space for a pretty, pretty small crew of people. Our capital projects that we did last year in the 24, 25 budget cycle, with the Siemens upgrades at the high school, which are controllers for some of our building automation stuff, concrete work at the high school, gym equipment repairs at the high school, concrete at Carter, water heater at Dyer, playground fence at Dyer, painting, the Dyer Gym, fire panel upgrade for Winkler, P A system at Cooper and Dyer, and that was all in the 25, 20, 24, 25 capital projects budget of $250,000.
And just as a reminder, we've been at a lower budget of $250,000 for capital projects only because of the failure of the last couple years of operational referendum. We are, because we passed the operational referendum here in April, we do plan on bumping that up to $500,000, moving into the 25, 26 school year. But that still is also not as high as we would like it to be over time in order to really care for all of our buildings and grounds across the district. But just a good reminder on, if you're thinking, is 250 a good number or no? Okay. Tight.
A couple of the next projects I'm going to talk about are related to Fund 50. Fund 50 is dedicated for food service operations. We can't use that funding for anything else except for food service. So I'm just going to explain that so that the next two projects, you kind of have an idea. It's a combination of state, federal, and meal purchases. That's where all the money comes from, and it can only be used for food service. We can't use that anywhere else in the district. So we did the food servery kitchen update at the high school, rearranged and updated the serving area. New lighting, new flooring, removed hallway doors, installed new roll-up doors. And again, all of that money came from Fund 50. It was about $375,000. That was a big project that was done last summer.
Looks fantastic.
Here's the before picture. And this is the after. So you can see the two big garage doors, those are roll-up garage doors. Updated the flooring, gave it a new look, kind of spruced it up, brought it, brought it more current and closer to what the rest of our buildings look like, the colors and schemes and like that type of stuff. The next project that's been kind of ongoing is data wrangler. They're electrical monitoring devices that we put on the electric services so we can monitor the electrical usage in all the kitchen spaces. Again, we can charge that back to Fund Fifty. So we've got about a year's worth of data for Carter and the high school. And over that year, we've been able to offset about ninety-seven thousand dollars from Fund Ten to Fund Fifty. We've also installed them as of January first at the rest of the grade schools. And so far, within the last three months, we've been able to offset about fifteen thousand dollars. And we'll projected be able to save about a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year with these devices. So they monitor everything from warmers to lights to HVAC. And that's all billed just during food service hours, you know, they prep and everything. But during food service times, we can build the electrical for the lighting and the HVAC and all of that type of stuff. So it's been a big project, and I think it's a big savings to the district.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good reminder and piece where no matter what, even having passed the operational referendum, no matter what, a huge component of our job is to really look at how are we generating revenue as a system and really thinking like a business at times, because that's what we sometimes have to do. So when we put in devices like this, this is just helping our general fund, Fund Ten, which then offsets the ability to either hire another staff member or at least take care of C P I increases or right, or other needs that we have, could take care of a capital project that we have in the district. So all things that we would not have been able to do if we did not install the data wranglers and really utilize Fund Fifty in a more thoughtful way.
We also renovated Cooper Montessori, moved walls, created better learning spaces, new carpeting, paint. That was all through private donations from the Sullivan family, and we dedicated the library to the Sullivan family. Again, that was all donated time, or all donated funds, about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We had to empty all the classrooms. We abated some asbestos in a few places, painted all the rooms, all new flooring, and then had to move everything back. So that was a big project for our team. Took us a couple of weeks to just strip the floors to get ready for the carpeting, because they had to be stripped in order for the carpet to adhere. So that was a big project last summer. I want to thank all the guys for that. That was a lot of work. These are capital projects that we did for, or I had planned for this, this upcoming year. We've got concrete grinding and assessment. We're going to go around the building, the high, start at the high school, and just assess the sidewalks, grind areas that may be trip hazards and things like that to prevent trips and falls. Update the curtain, the center curtain in the gym at the high school is, is twenty-five years old. We replaced the outer two about four or five years ago. This one has some failing straps, so we want to update that this summer. Outside of F R C, there's a staircase that goes down into the basement that needs to be repaired and the staircase, or the railings need to be repaired. Waller has some HVAC bearings that need to be replaced. Winkler, we're going to move some storage doors so that we can have kind of breakout spaces for special ed and for the rest of the building. These are storage closets that aren't used for storage that often, and that building could really use some extra space. We also have to take over the camera and the door control system at the four ninety-six building. Currently, it's on Gateway system. We have to transfer it over to ours, and then we also have to do HVAC there. So we have to take over the system, get it on our network so we can control everything. I also have two projects up here that are up for the board to approve is the Siemens project, which is eighty-eight thousand for the next phase of that, and then also boiler replacements at the high school. So this is all the twenty-five, twenty-six capital projects budget, which is, again, Jill said, five hundred thousand dollars this year.
And he'll go over, as Jess just shared, those last two items. Anything over twenty-five thousand needs board approval. So you'll see those in just a couple of minutes as items for action for you to approve.
And other noteworthy stuff. Because of the redistricting, we had to do a lot of moves this last summer. With, and with closing line at school, all the fifth graders went to K M S. So we moved around forty classrooms from one location to another. So the entire Lyons building had to get brought into town. All the fifth grade classes that were in different buildings all had to be brought over to Carter. So that was a big, a big move for our department, and we had a lot of time and effort in that. All the custodians, all the engineers, it took us a lot of time to do that. Other things, we refinished the floor at Carter with donated products. James Farrell was able to get product donated by the vendor, and then we recoded the gym floor to, to make it pop and make it look nice again. We audited our key system, and we're still in the process, the process of that, of just trying to audit everything and, and track down all of our keys. We also researched vendors for a facilities assessment. We'd like to go around and get a little bit better idea of what we need to do for upcoming budget cycles and where we may have a shortfall in the future. We analyzed our student, our Studer data to increase scores. We took a look at what the teachers had to say and, and see how we can improve those scores for next year. And we also traded in one of our pieces of equipment for a skid steer, which helped us now take over all of the snow removal at Carter. So we, we only now contract the Burlington High School for snow removal. We do the rest of the stuff in-house with the equipment we have. Countless event setups. We do, our department does a ton of different things around the district. You may not think of it, but all of these different things we, we have a part in. Maybe not a major part, but there are a lot of different things that happen within our department to handle those things. Soccer games, football, basketball, softball, baseball, wrestling, volleyball, track and field, cross-country, music concert, plays, prom, homecoming, academic recognition, F R C graduation, Carter graduation, high school graduation, the list goes on. There's just a ton of stuff that we move around the district, that we handle, that we take care of on a daily basis, that people don't think of. We're not teachers, we're not teaching staff, but there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes that we do. These are just some pictures of those different events. This is F R C graduation at the high school auditorium. This is Carter graduation, or eighth grade recognition, I guess is the say. This is high school graduation. It takes our team a couple of days to set up. Rob Lineiger spends at least a week prepping, getting things put together, bringing stuff from different areas so that we can get ready for the event. Takes him and I the last day right before graduation, get data, set sound, and, and get everything ready and, and prepped for graduation. And then ball fields. This is, on the left is the high school hardball field, and on the left, that's, or on the right, I'm sorry, is closer to us, that's softball field. Kerry and his crew are out there very, very consistently taking care of these fields, mowing lawns. And we have a lot of district property to take care of. There's a lot of grass to cut. And we also do snow removal and salting for the district. So like I said, we, we don't do the high school parking lot. Everything else in the district we take care of. That's all the sidewalks, that's all the parking lots, all the driveways. And there's a lot of early mornings that we're up at two, three o'clock in the morning that we're here and trying to get the doors open for the school. So a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff again that we do. Carter's snow removal.
You guys are, which is also why we try to make the call the night before if we're going to cancel school. Big advocate for doing it that way, because it just also lets our team know if we really have to get up at two in the morning or if you can let the snow fall or not.
Yeah, it's tough when the storm doesn't quit until six A M., and we're, we're there at three o'clock to try and get things cleared. By the time you clear something, you go back and, and an hour later, two hours later, it's already got snow on it again. But we do the best we can and, and try to get everybody in the building safe as possible. So our department is considered support staff. The Burlington, the Buildings and Grounds team is considered support staff. We don't directly teach, coach, or counsel students at B A S D, but we, but our role is essential to their success. We provide a clean, safe, warm, and welcoming environment for nearly three thousand students and four hundred staff members every day. Our work ensures that classrooms, athletic facilities, common areas, and outdoor spaces are well-maintained and ready for all different types of activities. Without a healthy, functional, physical environment, teaching and learning would be significantly impacted. The B and G team plays a very important behind-the-scenes role in supporting the district and everyone who uses our facilities.
Take a quick little round of applause to the B and G team.
Thank you, everybody.
No, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
Why do we outsource for snow removal at B H S?
We don't have the manpower. We would need another three trucks and probably three more people to, to do that. We have about seven of us that do snow removal, so we'd, we'd need three more vehicles and three more people to take care of that. So we do outsource that area.
And when you say vehicles, I'm from Texas, even though I've been here a while. What vehicles would be needed?
That'd be three more plow trucks. The company that we also upsource to is K R Contracting. They use a large skid steer and then two trucks to, to clear the snow. We do take care of the salting though, which saves a lot of money. Most contractors charge by the pound, and it's much, much more expensive to have somebody else salt, so we take care of the salting.
So would they take over that four ninety-six or three?
Probably. That's right next door, it's almost the same campus, so probably.
For the project of switching over the cameras and doors at the four ninety-six building, is there like more hardware that needs to be put in or?
Yeah, we'll have to get a couple of doorboards from our vendor, and then they'll get that on our system. The electric strikes that are in place and the card readers are going to stay, and we can utilize those. But the current system they use isn't compatible with our system, so we have to switch it over so then we have one system across the system.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, good questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate you very much.
It's really fun getting to know them. I didn't know a lot about what you do, so it was really fun tonight to get to know that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next up is items for action, so you're going to just go ahead and stay right there.
Yes, sir.
First item is the bids for the district project updates, which I think you briefly touched on. So go right ahead.
Yeah, I've got three projects that I need approval for. I've got the Siemens T E C project, which again is a continuance from last year. We're going to move on to do the next phase of that. So that's, we're kind of stuck with one vendor just because they handle most of the stuff across our, our buildings, and we, we kind of have to go with them. So Siemens is doing the, the quote for us on that. It's the next loop, and that's eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the next section.
In total, Jess, how much is it to upgrade all of the T E C across the building?
It's between five and six hundred thousand dollars. And this is just a small portion of our system. This just controls the univents and V A Vs, which are, the univents are a wall-mounted unit that move air and also heat the space. They bring in outside air from the outside. There's some units above the ceiling, it's called a V A V, that brings in air and reheats it for particular spaces. So that isn't like the main, main controllers, that isn't like large components. They're just small electronic components that control the, the univents and T, and the V A Vs in the building.
This, that's a really good example of just one project that costs five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, right? And we are having to spread it out over multiple years to try to make sure that we can take care of other projects at the same time too. And my understanding is, at the high school, Rob, you're using the vents that, in the sections we redo, you're saving those parts because you can't really get the old parts anymore. But then you're, you can use them in the sections we haven't redone yet, right?
Yep.
To try to buy time.
We're buying time until we can do the next section. And I think we have five to six that are left over from the last project. Some of the issues with those is they're getting hot spots and they're burning out. So as we take them out, we're, we're inspecting them, looking at them to see if they'll work, and then we can use them for a different area. So I'd like to keep going with this project so we can, you know, get this phase done.
If we didn't have these in the building and let's say they didn't work, what would that do to the building?
We can't properly control the temperature in each classroom. Each classroom has a V A V or, or a univent. So when these go out, those kind of go rogue. The fan turns on and off, the outside air dampers open and close. And the outside air dampers bring in twenty-degree air in the winter time. That can fully open and completely cool that room, and it could pop a coil. We have boiler heat, yeah, boiler heat at the high school. So we have hot water, and that's the next, next part of my presentation. We have hot water that circulates through coils. Those coils are mounted within the V A V. So if that outside air damper opens up, we could freeze that coil and then flood out a space. So it's pretty crucial that we can control the space temperatures.
Do you have an estimate on like how much for energy efficiency we're saving with these changes?
I, I don't, no, I don't. I can, I can look that up, but I don't have those.
Just figures?
Yeah.
Are there any grant opportunities that would potentially assist in this?
Not, not that I know of.
No, okay.
Were these original?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, they're fifteen-ish years? Yeah. Building automation turns over pretty quickly. You think of your, your laptop computer, your computer at home, it lasts four or five years maybe, if you're lucky. These are fifteen years old, so they're, they're pretty old as far as technology goes.
How long do we foresee the new ones lasting?
Probably similar, ten to fifteen-year cycle.
Any other questions and comment, questions or comments on this item? Okay. Looking for a motion then to approve the Siemens T E C upgrade at B H S for price not to exceed eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? That passes. Next up, we have the Primastar bid.
Yep, boiler replacement at the high school. I'm going to jump ahead a couple of slides to just kind of explain the, the heating system. So this is just, this is very simple but basic. This has two boilers and basically two air handlers. So on this diagram, it shows a boiler, two boilers here. Those boilers heat water, then we call it processed hot water, that gets sent around the building and goes to all the air handlers, all the V A Vs, all of the heating units within the building. So these boilers are the kind of like the, the heart of the building. They keep heat on in, in the building. The boilers from the high school are original, so they're about twenty-five years old. This is the boiler plant, this is a picture of the boiler plant. So there's six boilers stacked in this room, and they're, they're snug. There isn't a lot of space in here. That's kind of one of the reasons we have to kind of go back with this particular boiler. So there's six of them lined up. The second from the back is the one that failed. The heat exchanger broke and it started letting water out on the ground, basically. Rob noticed a big puddle in the area, went to take and investigate it, shut it off, or, or isolated it so we didn't lose more water. This happened back in February, correct? So the heat exchanger, on one side is the fire, the other side is the water. So they don't mix. You can't, you can't let the water into the fire area of the boiler, it's, it's going to fail, it's, it's going to dump water all over the place. So we isolated it, had our contractor come in, and there's, there's a hole in the heat exchanger, so we, we need to replace it. So they're all original. Life, lifespan on these is about twenty-five years, so we, we got our money's worth of these boilers. So I'm, I'd like to replace three of them this year. That's what this quote is for. We have a total of six boilers, and this will at least get us half of the plant back, so we have a reliable heat source for next year. Our next phase, we could go with condensing boilers that we can modulate a little bit better. We could use them in the spring and the fall to conserve on energy and, and try to save on, on some energy usage. But these three are kind of crucial. We can run the building in almost any temperature on three-ish, correct? Sometimes more run. The building automation system will bring on more or less boilers as the outside air temperature changes and the demand for heat inside the building changes. So they spool up, we may have just one running. If it's really cold, we may have up to four of them running. So this is a very important part of the building.
Do you want to talk about, you got three quotes?
I have three different quotes, one from Cornerstone, which was just under the Primastar quote. I think two to three thousand dollars less. And then I also have a, a quote from Lee McCandle. Lee was quite a bit higher, it was around two hundred and thirteen thousand. I, I'd like to go with Primastar because there are I'd like to go with Primus Star because they're our local contractor. We've been using them for years and years. They have Fortex that live in Burlington. Those guys used to work for Vorpegel Service, which sold to Primus Star. So these guys know our buildings. George Longori is a great guy. He has a district key. He knows all of our engineers. He knows our buildings. So we're saving time and money with having engineer technicians that know our spaces. They come in and they get right to work. They're not wandering around trying to find things, asking questions. They know what our buildings are. So I'd like to stay with Primus Star. They do a lot of our service work. They tune up all of our boilers, our air handlers. We call them on a regular basis. They do the majority of our mechanical work that our engineers can't take care of.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Then I am going to look for a motion to approve the Primus Star bid for three out of the six boilers at B H S for a cost not to exceed $175,957.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you all very much. Okay, next up is Burlington High School. The A F S Student Exchange Program Request. I would assume that's.
Yep.
Oh, it's from you.
Yep, I'll just take that one. So every year we have to get board approval to accept students who are foreign exchange students to come to B H S. So this is just looking for approval for us to continue working with A F S. They're looking to place one to three students. We don't have the which students yet. They first have to know that we can accept them and then they would be seeking students out. This year, we've had two students from Germany at the high school and we tend to have at least a few every single year. So just looking for approval for one to three A F S students.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
I just have a comment. Are we still placing people from other than A F S, other groups? Because I know if we had some others for a while that would come, exchange students.
Yes, we did maybe two years ago. Yeah, if we do get an ask for, if we do get an ask from a different company, we'll bring it to the board for approval.
Because I think there were two or three at one time when I was on the board. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the A F S Student Exchange Program Request as presented.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Next up, we have Ruth or Jill with Business Services. For a resolution authorizing a fund transfer, establishment of an escrow account, and defeasance of general obligation refunding bonds dated April 1st, 2019.
B and G staff, you are welcome to staff you want, but we also will not be offended if you would like, if you want to leave for the night. But thank you, I also want to add. I also want to add thank you for your tremendous service that you provide.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Good call, Ruth.
Okay, so back in the fall when we set the tax levy, we did approve $5,65,000 extra for what we call debt defeasance or prepaying our long debt. So that was the revenue side of it. So we collected those tax monies in January and February. Now we have to have the expense side or the payment side. So that's what the resolution is tonight, is to authorize that payment. Couple of things. One, the, this portion of the extra payment will pay off the remainder of the 2036 balance and all of the 2035 balance. So we've knocked five years off of that total payment schedule. And the $5 million will save us, it's $5,65,000 will save us $2,010,000 or about 40% rate of return. So I think that's phenomenal. So this resolution will authorize that payment. How it actually works is the money goes into an escrow account. So it's held by this, we use associated trust until that, the debt isn't callable until 2027. But legally, by us putting that money aside, we can say that it's de fees or paid so we can take it off of our books. So the resolution is authorizing that escrow. The one other thing it does is give Jill or I the ability to sign any documents just to make that, those final payments happen.
So just to really clarify, okay? The debt that we're talking about is from the 2018 Capitol referendum where the main part of that was building Cartridge Middle School, okay? So every year, as a school board, you can levy above the revenue limit for additional debt defeasance. So you guys made that decision back in October where we talked about levying an extra $5 million, right? So you did that. Then the money was collected from the taxpayers, right? And now we have the money. So now we're saying, hey, we need to pay the, pay the bank for the $5 million that we just collected. This is not asking for approval for additional debt defeasance for the 25, 26 school year, okay? This is debt defeasance for this school year that you already approved, okay? Just to make sure that's clear to all that might be listening.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
We do need a roll call vote, please.
Okay. All right, we are looking for, I'm sorry. I am looking for a motion then to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer funds to pay the debt defeasance already issued.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and then Nora, if you could do roll call, please.
Kate. Approved. Roseanne?
Approve.
Paul?
Approved.
Taylor?
Approved.
Madeline?
Approved.
Peter?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And then Taylor and Paul, there's a couple of documents I need you to sign later. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Ruth. Appreciate it. Next up is Student Services, which is the proposed student and athletic fees.
Yep, so we had talked about throughout the referendum that we weren't increasing fees, right? And the fees we are referencing in that regard, moving into the 25, 26 school year, is in relation to our athletic fees and registration fees. So you can see here, I'm trying to make it a little bit bigger for you. This is our fees this school year. And you could see none of them are changing for the 25, 26 school year for any of our books or materials like that. The only adjustment that we're making with fees is in relation to lunch and breakfast, okay? So here's the adjustments taking place here. You can see it kind of ranges between seven and 13% increase, more so because of inflationary costs when it comes to food. Otherwise, all of our athletic fees, everything else, you can see these two columns are remaining the same. So just looking for approval to make those adjustments to food service fees for the 25, 26 school year.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion then to approve the proposed student and athletic fees as presented.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Next up is the Committee Reorganization. We pretty much kept everything the same. Just swapped Kate out with Aubrey. Roseanne will now be the Chairman of Teaching and Learning. And I think that would be a good selection there. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Or would you like any requests for changes? Oh, the other change is after last meeting, Peter's recommendation to add the Legislative Liaison Section to the Board Governance and Communications Committee. So I think that fits in well. So thank you for the suggestions there. Okay. All right, then I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve the Committee Reorganization as presented.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is passed. Finally, next up is the Annual Meeting. The proposed date is August 25th, 2025. I think we'll do it here at District Office this year because we really didn't need to be in Cartridge last year. So does that work for everybody? August 25th, it's a Monday at 6:30 p.m.
That is when we historically have been holding the annual meeting, is the fourth Monday in August.
Does that work for everybody?
I don't have any conflicts.
It's good for me.
I'm available.
You're good, sir?
Make it work.
All right. All right, then I guess I'm looking for a motion then to approve the annual meeting to take place Monday, August 25th at 6:30 p.m. here at the District Office. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the Adopted School. We didn't really change that the last couple of years, but I think it might be a good idea to maybe do some reshuffling. So Jill is going to walk in the front and everybody.
Oh, I am, huh?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then everybody is going to pick a name out of the red bucket. And what you get is what you get.
But if you have a repeat and you have the same building, then I think you should put it back in and we pull it back out, okay? So you all know who you have right now, right?
Yes.
And just as a reminder, what Adopted School is, is there's seven school members and we happen to have seven schools, right? We combine like Wisco with Cooper and we combine F R C, Win, and PAC altogether as our Burlington Alternative School. And this way, as board members, you don't feel so stressed to have to attend lots of events all over the district. You just have your adopted school. And the goal is to attend at least two events per year for the school that you are assigned. The max number of years that we've had you stay the same school is two, okay? So the school that you would have, you would be assigned twice. There was some conversation that you have mentioned and we can have this conversation now or later. It's up to you. Someone, I don't remember which board member, had suggested to me, hey, it might be nice to have the board member attend one of your one-on-ones because I meet with the principals every three weeks. So to attend a one-on-one with you and the principal and be able to like walk around with you. So that's kind of up to the board if you guys think that's something we should add. Because I'd be happy to do that and so would the principals.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go around, but remember who you had and pull it out. And if it's the same, you got to put it back, okay?
We should actually be last because you're going to be new, so.
Burlington Alternative School.
Okay. It's not the same, it's good. Who do you have before, Dyer?
Dyer, Winkler.
Woo, nice, we're doing good.
Except for them.
You had Cartridge, right?
Okay, come on, be smarter than the paper. Yep, I'm good.
Oh, who is it? You're not sure? Okay.
Marlo took mine, so I'm safe.
Ooh, Cartridge.
Ooh.
Sorry.
Like Taylor?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are tiny. Dyer.
Ooh.
Get to meet with the new principal.
This doesn't count as your one-on-one, Paul.
Right now, yeah.
B H S.
Oh, so that's going to be Kate. We only had one where we had this switch.
Oh, I was going to say there wasn't another one in there. She's a little.
This should be Waller, right? Right?
Should be.
Oh, yeah, Waller.
Perfect.
All right, excellent. Next up, and probably won't be much to say, but School Board Committee Updates. We'll go ahead and we'll start with Board Governance, Communications, and Legislative Liaison. So that's going to be Kate. Since we haven't met, you don't technically have a report. The other thing I'll say is if you're committee chairs, please reach out to your committee members and Jill and try to set up a time that works best for everybody to be able to either meet in person, virtually, whatever works best for you all. I think that would be great. Next up is Building and Grounds. Have not met, okay. Finance, Mr. Turk.
Yeah, we haven't met, but why don't we stick around? It's Paul and Kate. You guys mind after the meeting? So we should schedule a meeting.
Okay. Personnel, Mr. Strom.
Yeah, so we met this past Wednesday on the 7th, virtually, to discuss any of the appointments, retirements, resignations, and terminations since our last month's meeting. And then our next meeting will be Wednesday, June 4th.
Third? Is it the 4th or is it the 3rd?
Fourth.
Fourth.
You're talking Policy Committee.
Okay. Perfect segue. Next is Policy Committee, Mr. Cobra Nick.
So we haven't met as often as we had been in the past, so we have nothing to report today. But we do have an upcoming meeting, which would be the third, I believe, if everyone could still make that.
There's been a little lull in the committees because of the reorg of election, new board members, and reorg of all the committees. So we kind of were in like a, in the month of May until we have the reset committees.
And Teaching and Learning, Mr. Strom.
We're going to be meeting the 14th, which is around two.
Excellent.
So that'll be fun.
Two days from now.
Yep.
All right, okay, we're all set there. Next up is next meeting dates, Teaching and Learning, as Roseanne just said. May 14th at 11:00 a.m. School Board Workshop is May 15th. That is at 6:30, so hopefully everybody can make that. Person, I'm sorry, Policy Committee, June 3rd at 5:30 p.m. Personnel Committee, closed session, June 4th, as Noah just said. Our regular June board meeting is June 9th at 6:30. And then, of course, we have Personnel again at June 11th. Oh, that's B A.
Yep.
And then, again, just a reminder, the next School Board Workshop is June 23rd at 6:30 p.m.
Yeah, just to reiterate that Personnel Committee meeting is not in relation to the normal School Board meeting. That is the meeting with the B E A in order to go through negotiations.
Okay. And last but not least, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.